This meeting will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Councilman Williams is somewhere in the building, I'm sure he'll join us shortly. Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have made for us. And God, we just pray that as we take care of your business today, that you will give this council wisdom and knowledge and the courage to make sometimes what are considered to be very tough decisions. We just pray that you will give them the strength they need to do that, be with the Mayor and his administration. God, thank you for your blessings on Gadsden. Pray, God, that we will shine for you in all we do and we'll give you the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session at a city council meeting held on November the 5th. Some move, second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the weeks of November the 1st through the 7th and the 8th through the 14th. Some move, second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Roberts.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
Mayor? Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1401 Stroud Avenue in District 1, the state of Alabama, Justin Scott Chidham and the IRS Tax Lane Department being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in October of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Some move, second. Is there any discussion?
Brian, have you reviewed this one for the rehab?
We'll look at it a little closer. The initial assessment was it would not fit. But we'll look at it, crunch the numbers and see.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance sale of property located at 75 West Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 7, Marsha B. Wood being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of last year. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in September of last year, but as you can see in the pictures, no work has been done. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Some move, second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing abatement nuisance lane against property located at 2202 Lookout Avenue in District 7, state of Alabama, Revenue Department, and William F. Harper being the last known owners. This is for demolition, which has already been performed, and the amount is $1,840. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Some move, second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance rezoning property located at 1216 Wilbanks Avenue and a portion of 1109 Holt Street in District 2 from Route R1 on Family Residential to B1 Neighborhood Business District. Quality of Life Services has requested the rezoning for the purpose of building and operating a medical and dental clinic. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
I would like to speak with Quality of Life Health Services. We appreciate the zoning committee recommending for this to be performed so we can build-
Would you come up here, please? State your name and address for the city clerk.
Amelia Wafford with Quality of Life, 1411 Piedmont Cut Off East Gadsden. Quality of Life would like to express appreciation to the zoning committee for recommending approval of the rezoning so we can build our new school-based health center over on Wilbanks Avenue between the Oscar Adams Elementary School and Litchfield Middle School. So I would like to speak in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, if it pleases the council, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this item today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consent.
Okay. So move for adoption.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Just like to say thank you to Quality of Life. They provide a great service for our community and it's going to be something they'll be doing there for Adams Elementary School and we just appreciate what they're doing.
Now, I'll elaborate on that too. Quality of Life is a great, great community partner. And I would like some of our larger employers even to follow their model as relates to corporate citizenship. They are very keen on putting their money where their mouth is as relates to corporate citizenship. You can see their footprint throughout the community and that's what corporate citizenship is all about. So we really appreciate what you do.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is a public hearing is an ordinance to annex and zone property located at 4610 Airport Road in District 6. The Edgewall County Communications District has requested the city to annex the property contingent upon zoning it as B2 General Business District. They plan to build and operate the Edgewall County Communications District E911 Center at that location. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? This ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, go ahead and suspend the rules on this today, please, so we could vote on this today.
Second.
I'd ask for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous vote for consent.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance regarding certain uses. The Planning Department has requested adding uses under culture, entertainment, and recreation, and retail and wholesale trade. This would update the chart of permitted uses so that items may be more appropriately categorized. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? The ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, again, if it pleases the council, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this item today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the vote was unanimous for consent.
Move for passage. Second.
Is there any discussion?
This just updates our zoning rules as far as what business can be located and what zones. So it's just kind of an update on our zoning codes.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Bass Federation Incorporated. This is for the city to sponsor a tournament to be held June 1 through 6, 2014, at Cusa Landing, and the amount is $3,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Some move, second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Clark Memorials of Alabama Incorporated. This is for leveling settled monuments at Forest Cemetery, and the city agrees to indemnify and hold the company harmless in the event of inadvertent damage to the monuments. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Some move, second. Is there any discussion?
We just want to thank Clark Memorial for volunteering to go out and straighten up some of these monuments that might be tipping over a little bit. They're doing it for no cost to the city. We appreciate what they do.
Isn't that Richard Cox on First Avenue?
It is.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. We got a motion to adopt this?
We do.
Mm-hmm.
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items. The first of which is a resolution authorizing acquisition of property. I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'll let the mayor explain exactly what this property consists of.
The city of Gadsden is purchasing the former K-Mark property, approximately 9.3 acres. The property has joined 4.2 acres the city owns on, facing the river. And also 9.15 acres of Alabama Power currently own property. It's going to be designed for development of a recreational area along the Cusa River Front. Once the conceptual drawings of the recreational area are complete, the city will seek opportunities for development of the former K-Mark property plus the existing city-owned riverfront property, which together total 13.5 acres. The whole project, when it's finished, will encompass almost 25 acres. And our vision is this project will help as a catalyst for development of the riverfront and the redevelopment of the corridor along George Wallace Drive.
Thank you, and I understand that industrial, commercial development has already hit the ground running.
That's right. She's been running for years as it relates to that. And people, just, you know, for those who have historically inquired about development of the riverfront, I think it's worth noting that this kind of speaks to what happens when the city has controlling interest of the property because we're really able to drive activity. What serves as a huge impediment with any commercial, in any commercial scenario is generally when the city doesn't have control, the interest of that property, you're left to the whims of private property owners who are then negotiating the land purchase deal. So, again, this helps to drive activity and you'll see a lot of activity along that riverfront. As the mayor mentioned, what that does is it makes it more attractive to private developers who actually want to come in and then develop the waterfront. So this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Yeah, with a few other things going on too, a lot of conversations. I feel like I'm back in the real estate business. Comes in handy sometimes.
Yes, it does.
Is there any other?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, this other resolution is authorizing a lease agreement with Alabama Power Company for the other-
7.2 acres?
Uh, yes. 7.2 acres that are joined, that are joined to property that we have on the other side of the river there, next to K-Mark, so that we have all of that property there. This is for $1 a year, for 20 years.
Yes, 9.15 acres.
9.15 acres, actually, from Alabama Power Company, which is wetland that will be converted into walk-in facilities and parks.
Do you have a second to consider?
I move. Did I ask for unanimous consent to consider?
I think you did.
If I did, okay, then I got a second.
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
We've done it.
I think you already had discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have an abstention.
Oh, one abstention.
Okay, do we have any other? Any other new business? It's back here in front of me.
I think Deverick's got one, I think.
You don't have one?
Okay, brings it to me then. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent, please, for resolution authorizing agreement with SME for Environmental Services. This is a relationship to proposed recycling drop-off center that will be on Henry Street.
You have a second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is where we can get our recycling center going. We're trying to get it going by January 1. This is going to maybe speed the process up with it.
This is the old Short Food Distillation Center down on Henry Street.
Yeah, it's just right off Mega now. Was that 9th, right in there? Right across from the Grissom, right in there.
Does this mean we're not going to be doing it over here on First Street, across the street over here with the wagons and all that sort of thing?
We'll be doing everything down there.
Everything will go to Henry Street.
On Henry Street.
That's good. That'll be kind of bad over there, really, you know?
Actually, if we can get some money off of the stuff now, we can do a little bit just to get that done.
Absolutely.
It's going to be good. And if we can do a few more things too, we get it running.
Basically, we'll be taking revenue in off that, and right now, we're paying to have it up there. We're using our own manpower and everything else to go up there.
Yeah, private citizens will bring their trash or their recyclable material to this facility. And, of course, to the point that you just made, we'll be getting rebates back from some of those items that we've been throwing in the landfill.
That's centrally located too, Deverick. They won't be coming down here in one place.
Recycling is the good thing for us, period. Recycling is good for the city.
Mayor, will this recycling center be open on Saturdays?
We haven't worked all the details out yet.
I know I see a lot of people dropping stuff off on Saturdays over here.
Yeah, we might try to do something like a half a day. It's a work in progress on a few things, but we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
You through, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. President, I have one resolution awarding bid 3252 to Sunbelt Fire, Inc., for turnout gear for the fire department. Ask for consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Nobody said anything about discussion, but I would like to.
I did.
I like-
Did you really?
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Not only is this going to be pants and coats for the fire department, what I like best about it is set for new personnel. We're adding new folks. And that impresses me a whole bunch. Anyway, it's new gear, and that's what we're asking for. That's the end of my discussion.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I do have another one. This is a resolution authorizing payment of $21,757.63 to Edgewall County Commission for one-half of the cost to pay Lauren Drive. Ask for consent to consider.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, this is a labor that has finally made love. It is true, and the county was gracious enough to go and havers with us on this thing, so we're happy with it. That's the end of my discussion on that.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Is that it? Okay, department reports, committees, where is she? There she is. First Friday.
No, we've got something different this time, believe it or not. Thank you, Council President, Council members, Mayor. I'm Kay Moore, Director for Downtown Gadsden. This weekend, we are kicking off the holiday season with Christmas Open House with our Downtown Merchants. So Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, it's considered this your invitation to come downtown and start your Christmas shopping or finish your Christmas shopping, enjoy some great food and some, just some fun. Different merchants will have different hours and different merchants will have different things in their stores, but they'll all have some great sales and some snacks. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Now, Saturday, I'm going to pretend like that 50/50 chance of rain is going to be 50% chance that it won't rain. We have the Clydesdale Horse and Wagon coming downtown, and Santa will be here. You'll be able to ride down Broad Street in the wagon pulled by the Clydesdale horses, and so that's always a fun thing. The pickup point will be right there near Fambro's in the 400 blocks, so between 11:00 and 2:00 on Saturday. So that will be our big event for the weekend. But our merchants worked hard, their windows are beautiful, it's really nice looking downtown now, so we're getting into the Christmas spirit, and we invite everyone to come down and check it out. Just do a little stroll up and down Broad Street, Chestnut Locust, and just see what we have, because we have a beautiful downtown and we're very proud of it, and we want everybody else to be proud of it too.
Amen.
Thank you very much. So thanks for letting me come and talk about it. I appreciate it. Y'all come, I'm going to be looking for you downtown this weekend. Thank you.
Okay, you're doing a great job. Just keep it up. Okay, anybody else? Citizens request, Puddin' MacArthur wants to talk to us about Manah. Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is not Bill, or Puddin' MacArthur, it's Bill Willard.
That's more lewd.
I'm a volunteer with Manah, and of course, y'all made it in your infinite wisdom, made it Manah Sunday, this coming Sunday. It's a fundraiser, and here to talk about it is our board chairman, Puddin' MacArthur.
You need my address?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I think in 2008, you declared Manah Sunday, the Sunday following Thanksgiving every year, and I just came to remind everybody about that. I also want to thank you for all you do for Manah. We have presently about 175 volunteers who five days a week deliver meals. Some of the meals are delivered to other localities like Atala and Southside, but most of them in the city of Gadsden. And last year, we delivered almost $60,000, $60,000 meals, not dollars, but, which I think is an amazing number of meals delivered. Also, next Sunday afternoon at the McDonald's in Southside, we are having a pancake supper from 5:00 to 7:30, and the proceeds will benefit Manah too. So I just wanted to thank you for all you do for us.
Thank you.
What was the date on the pancake? I'm sorry, I was sleeping through.
November 24th, this Sunday.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Puddin'. Okay, march by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
Sure, I'd like to. First of all, just remind everybody who lives on Mary Lou's Circle that we got about two more weeks, Mayor, and we're going to finish that job up hopefully, so that'll be good. I think everybody's getting tired of going around the circle instead of going straight now. Anyway, be reminded of that. And thank goodness the leaf crew got to the mountain in Alabama City, so, watch it, Billy, they're on the way, son, they're on the way. Anyway, I want to thank them because they are doing a good job and in full force up there. And I'm sure they'll be moving on to District 1 as soon as possible. Billy, we want to talk about the Patriots Luncheon.
Yeah, you can go ahead, Ben.
I'm going to leave that to you. I want to talk about, I want to talk about the museum.
Um, not all of it.
The dedication.
Okay, okay.
Yes. The museum was dedicated at the Old Lee Myers Patriot Park last Wednesday, and we're really proud of it. We started that endeavor, good and gosh, 15 years ago, and it has become a reality, really through the efforts of the city as much as the Patriots Association. They've been really great to us and everything we've asked, so the museum is there. What we're asking people to do is to bring things that are on loan or as a gift to the Patriots that we can put in the museum. We're trying to get enough things that every time- We're trying to get enough things that every time you go, you won't see the same thing every time. We can swap it out. How many windows do we have? Six?
Six or seven.
Six windows in a circle. It's an octagon. I flunked that course, I think. How many?
Math, I never was good at math.
There's eight. Okay, so we're missing one. So, that's why I failed that course, I think. Anyway, I didn't design the building, Ben Conley did. But anyway, we're asking for donations and/or loans to put in there, so, like I said, it'll be different every time you go, and you can walk around and see it all. We're also putting in benches where you can, in Billy's case, when you get to that age that you'll have a place to sit down where you can follow through and go all the way around it.
You need it.
So, you need it.
Ben, if you don't feel bad enough already, I'll just remind you that that was on television, so just, just throw that out there.
If I've said anything that I ought to be sorry of, I'm glad of it. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
I'll take up there.
I just want to thank the council for working with the mayor's office really good, and everybody to know that we're not only trying to develop commercial throughout the city, but we're working on industrial and manufacturing jobs. And really, we've turned out pretty good considering the economy. The Area Development Magazine had us number two in the state and a couple of departments on municipalities, three hundred and fifty thousand or less, and we were in the top ten or fifteen on a couple of others in the southeast. So, you know, it's a slow go, and then you mix in all the bureaucratic stuff hoops you have to jump through, but, you know, appreciate that, and I think this is going to be a good project over here, I really believe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone that lights on the Falls will start the Friday after Thanksgiving, I think it's at five o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Mayor?
I believe so.
And if you've come by there at night, you can see they've really worked hard, they've been putting up lights down on Broad Street, little stuff on Broad Street, and they've been in Alabama City putting up all your Christmas decorations. And I just want to thank these, all these departments that's really come together, working together to do all this, to make the citizens of Gadsden, you know, happy, and they can see Christmas lights, they can go and have pictures made with Santa Claus and just tour the Falls. And Department of Recreation Director Kerry Payne, he's really doing a good job keeping up with all these, I don't know how he keeps up with all these people he's got, but he's doing a fantastic job with it, and all the work's going good, so we should be able to see everybody up there the Friday after Thanksgiving. That's all we got.
Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also say that the city really, I'm going to give some kudos to the city, because I, I think, I think your, your administration's doing a good job in all facets of, of managing the city and its assets. And I just want to say, yes, we're doing, we're doing a lot of things, and, and we all should be proud of what's going on in our city, and be thankful, you know, that we are not in the situation that some cities are in, because things could be a lot worse, but we're in good shape, and we are very thankful for that. Everything isn't, you know, always to my liking or your liking, anybody's liking, but together, you know, we accomplish all those things that we need to accomplish. And we don't have a mayor that we got, we're going to have to take his powers from him yet. We don't, we, he's not...
Don't have a mayor for what?
He's not done any of those things yet, so we in good shape, okay?
No drunken stupors?
No drunken stupors, no, no crack coke, no crack, you know, all that kind of good stuff. So, we, you know, we, we, we mastered that one, okay?
Man told me one time...
We didn't know, we don't know, if he is, we don't know it. He didn't tell us.
Man told me one time, he said, you ought, hey...
He hires it good if he does, so we, we're in good shape. He didn't go public with it.
I had a group tell me one time, said, you ought to run for legislature, because you squeaky clean. I said, you just ain't checked back far enough yet. Mayor, I don't believe you're on it, no.
Percy Sledge will be here Friday night, right, Jenna? At the Wallace Hall at Gadsden State Community College, so if you haven't, you know, go out and see Percy. He, he does put on a pretty good show. And for those of you who can remember those songs, they're beautiful ballads, you know, and, and you'll, you'll enjoy it. We got the article, we have a newspaper, there was a newspaper article, there was a newspaper article in yesterday's paper, Lisa, that alluded to the city of Millbrook and how they are asking for their legislators to extend them the right to vote on seven-day sales. So, you know, it, it, it just goes to show that we've asked the same thing, and I just hope that the people in Millville, Millbrook, don't have to, you know, provide all the information that we've been asked to provide in order to be able to vote on an issue, you know. They, they have substantiated the same thing that Lisa has said, it's the reasons why, you know, we can't attract some businesses to the city of Gadsden. And I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm not saying you vote yes or you vote no, or I vote yes, I vote no, but I, I want the right to vote, and I, and I think we all do, and that's where the matter is, right there. Give us the right to vote regardless of your personal convictions. Give us the right to vote on how we want to vote. And Litchfield Middle School is moving forward, the parent teacher organization out there is organized. Mr. Derayman said they got the engine, they got the engine in the bus, if the bus don't run, it's somebody else's fault, but the engine is in the bus, so let's, let's get together and continue to support that school throughout our community. It has been wonderful to see the progress they've made from, since, since they, since it conceptualized, you know, the fact that we need a PTO. And you alumni, alumni of Litchfield High School, please get involved, and let's take that school to the next level. And thank you, Ben. They did get the leaves in District One. The new program that they got going, to this point, all the leaves haven't fallen yet, but to this point, you know, it's been, they've been, they have kept up. So, I, I'm thankful for that, for the city of Gadsden, for, for the leaf collection that's going on so far. Patriots Day Luncheon last week, week before last, was a beautiful event. We had capacity to crowd, as many as we could handle, really. Our speaker was very dynamic, very patriotic, and we will have Patriots Luncheon again next year. And we're looking for those people that the community wants to submit names as being people to be conducted in the Patriots Hall of Fame, Gadsden et al. Patriots Association. So, as that time draws near next year, come through, come to the Patriots Association, get the proper applications, you know, and submit those names to us, because we're looking for good patriotic people to be inducted into the, into that service. That's it, everybody?
Yes, you did, and also, we're trying, we are looking into reinstituting the parade.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I think that's going to be a reality next year, so that'll put that back in focus, too.
Visit Patriot Park, you will like it, up next to Knock Little Falls. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry, on the parade, I want to mention that getting calls, I've had a few, right, if we called it off, with the people who put it on, there wasn't enough participation for what I was trying to see. You know, we helped and everything, but we didn't really call it off.
No, all we did was co-sponsor it, we didn't, we furnished, you know, protection. And it was sad, because everybody, not everybody, I'd say they, they figured around two hundred people figured that we called off the luncheon because the parade was on, and it hurt us a little bit till we got it out that everything was okay, but...
Yeah, we, we all got, we all got quite a few calls regarding that, and I, and I think, again, I think it's important to note that the organizers just weren't there this time. The, the person that historically has organized that wasn't available. And so, next year, what will happen is we'll have someone else to step up and, and drive the organizational effort, so, so it'll come back.
Well, I think we were all here when we, we asked the chamber to step up, and, and she gracefully said that they would come forward, so withheld, withheld.
Mayor?
I'd just like to say a special thank you to all the volunteers that work with Manah. That's, that's quite an organization. Sixty-five thousand meals last year, delivered to shut-ins and the elderly, that they really depend on that. So, that's a great organization, and, and all those volunteers, we said thank you, appreciate that. This coming Saturday, there will be a ceremony at Black Creek. There'll be a marker placed there, showing where Emerson guided General Forest across flooded Black Creek. So, anybody that's interested in history, come out Saturday, two o'clock, there'll be a ceremony there and a marker placed. And it's, it's at the end of the Black Creek Trail there by the Rescue Squad building there. Only other thing, we're talking about seven-day sales, we had a resolution prepared, and we were requested to hold off until all the council people could be here, which will be next week. So, there will be a resolution before us next week about seven-day sales. That's all I have.
Never?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick items. Would, would like to recognize a friend of mine in the back of the room, Harry McClendon, for coming out and, and supporting us here, and he's, hadn't seen you around lately, but it's good to see you today, for sure. Good to see you. The Carver Food Drive will be this Saturday. David, why don't you go ahead and take it?
Good morning. The annual food drive, WMGJ, it will be this Saturday. It marks the twenty-seventh annual community food drive, and it'll be held at our facilities at A-15 at Tuscaloosa Avenue, and of course, this goes toward contributions to the Etowah County Food Bank. We will be accepting non-perishable goods, and of course, that means anything that doesn't need to be refrigerated, so canned goods, boxed goods. We just ask that people make sure that their cans are in good condition, no dented boxes or cans or anything of that sort, and also, we ask that they check the expiration dates on their goods. Now, we are looking at this rain or shine, and there will be volunteers, you don't even have to leave your vehicle, you can just pull up and we'll take the goods from you at that point. Our goal this year is twenty tons, and the financial aspect of it, if you were to have a scale, it's going to be four hundred and fifty dollars, which purchases one ton of food. And for any contributions of a financial nature that you make, the checks are payable to Etowah County Food Bank. So, we're looking forward to another year of successful community support, and it, again, it is this Saturday, that's the twenty-third, beginning at eight AM, and the cutoff point is at six PM, when we will have everything on the truck, and it gets taken on to the food bank. So, thank you much. Tune into Magic 244, additional information about that, and also look for your article on this in the local paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We always appreciate WMGJ's efforts as it relates to that food drive. That's one of our, our great events in the city. Just, just a couple of other things, again, just to reiterate on some of what we've spoken about. Councilman Harris and, and the mayor have both spoken on some of the commercial and economic development activity that, that we've both engaged in or, and looked to engage in going forward. You know, that, that whole landscape has evolved over the years, you know, it's, you know, many cities waste a lot of time or spend a lot of time and resources attempting to snag the big fish projects, the, the next Toyota, the next Honda, the next Boeing and what have you. But one of the things I, I want to thank this mayor and this council and the mayor, and mayor staff for doing is that they're very diligent in looking downstream at opportunities. We don't stop going after the big fish, but we also look downstream at our mid-sized or two-one, two-two suppliers and, and how our infrastructure can support them. But one of the things that I would like, and, and as the, as we demonstrated today, we're also looking at green projects, because again, that's also an element of economic development and developing our landscape and diversifying our landscape. But one of the things I'd like for us to consider developing a strategy for is small business development. Small business development is key, and capital access programs for those small businesses is, is very important. There are a number of cities that are doing some very good things for small businesses, and I would like to see the city of Gadsden step up. Now, when I say that, that's not really something that the city can drive. It's not something that, that, that can be driven holistically by City Hall. There has to be a partnership with local banks who are willing to step up and, and live out the responsibilities that they have under the Community Reinvestment Act. And that's not a lip service activity. That is something that, that, that really requires banks to step up and be creative. And, and, and I, and, you know, it's, we get it as a, as a public entity, we get it, that banks make very little money, Harry can speak to that. We make, banks make very little money on those small loans, and so, many of them shy away from that. But, but we look and ask that banks approach this from the standpoint of holistically developing the community with one of the key job creators in this country, and that's small businesses. So, I will soon be calling a community development committee meeting and inviting some local banks out to talk about creative ways to develop capital access programs, whether we're talking about angel funding or, or some of the other smaller lending processes that can help to encourage these banks to, to, I'm sorry, encourage small businesses to develop ideas that create jobs and drive our economy. So, there'll be more to come as it relates to that, but again, I do want to thank, you know, this administration and this council for what we've done, but we've got some opportunity as it relates to small business, and I think that's it.
Okay. If there's anything else, this meeting's adjourned.